Call to order our rescheduled, rescheduled regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, September 28th, 2021. Ms. Dixon, could you please call the roll?
Ames?
Here.
Copeland? Feldman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Flowers, I believe she is not going to be here tonight.
Maybe later.
Okay. Hausmann?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
And Guanci?
Here. Councilor Hausmann, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll observe a moment of silence for Mr. Goodhue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And of course, on behalf of the city council, our condolences go out to Mr. Goodhue's family. All right, let's go right to, Christine, are we good to go right to order number 173, the Beverly-Salem American Legion Post 331 Resolution?
Sure. Would you like to read it or would you like me to?
No, I'm gonna read it.
Okay, all right.
That's okay. Just as a little bit of background, I'm speaking on behalf of Coach Levine. These guys, right here, were the first team ever from Beverly to go to the American Legion World Series. 6,000 American Legion teams around the country. These guys made it to the final eight. An incredible run. They won the states, they won the Northeast Regionals, and then we went down to North Carolina. I say "we" because I was fortunate to have my son on the team, and did pretty well down there in North Carolina. I think know that the manager of the team, Michael Levine, is with us tonight, and he did an incredible job. Oh, and thank you, Councilor Ames. Before I get to that, this is my first meeting, so I have to read a script because we are remote. Confirming member access. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before we get started, I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Head nod, thumbs up for members of the council. Thank you. Good evening. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting in public hearings will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so in the following manner. It is recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 9 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and public participation in any public hearing conducted during this meeting shall be by remote means only. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the role meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22, all subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed in subcommittee actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councilors of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof in a vote thereon. However, if the council may by majority vote order any matter pending before subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be forthwith returned to the full council. All that means for anybody that hasn't been here before is, rather than refer things to committee, we vote them as the committee of the whole on the floor as long as the majority of my colleagues agree with that. So we'll take a roll call vote as to whether we're going to do that or not. Ms. Dixon, can you do that?
Sure. Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers? Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, so we will vote everything out on the floor. We do have one public hearing tonight, so let me go over the ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone mute slash unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing number six on your telephone keypad. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. After councils have asked their questions, then we'll go to members of the public. Councilor Copeland has a question.
No, I do not have a question. That shouldn't be up. I'm trying to get my camera to work.
No worries. I know we want to see you. Thank you. Okay, I apologize for once again forgetting to read the script. You only have to deal with me six more times. So we're back to the Beverly-Salem American Legion Post 331. It was an incredible summer, and I know we have a couple of people other than the city council that would like to recognize them. So first, I would like to go to our state representative, Jerry Paracella.
Thank you very much, Council President. I really appreciate it. Just wanted to take a brief moment to recognize the accomplishments of the Beverly-Salem Legion team. As you mentioned, it's a historic season. They went further than any other team in the team's history, so it was quite an amazing season. The kids really did a great job. They are representing Beverly and Salem, and Coach Levine and his staff just did a terrific job. So I too have a resolution. I won't read it all, but what I would like to just read a couple lines from this resolution, which was passed by the Massachusetts House. So it's permanently in the records of the Massachusetts House of Representatives. And I'll just read a couple of lines because I don't want to go through all the whereas's, but it does, just in general, it does talk about the accomplishments of the team. So I would say, whereas, "It is fitting on this occasion that the Commonwealth recognize the contributions of the Beverly-Salem Legion baseball team to the City of Beverly and Salem and its citizens. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts House of Representatives proudly extends its well wishes for continued success. Congratulations to the players, the Beverly-Salem Legion baseball team, the coaching staff, and support personnel on their road to the World Series." So this resolution is an official record of the Massachusetts House of Representatives. I really want to congratulate the teams, especially the players, the older players who missed their senior year and have high school ball. You got to play in this tournament. It was a terrific accomplishment by all of you, and we look forward to inviting you to the State House later on this year. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Great job, Rep.
Thank you.
And next, we have somebody from Senator Joan Lovely's office.
That would be Senator, that would be Senator Joan.
Oh, dynamite. I saw the phone come up. It's Lovely Office, and it is a lovely office, but good to have you here, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city council. It is an honor to be here tonight to recognize this really terrific team. And I too have a resolution that was passed in the Senate, and I'm just gonna read the first and last paragraphs. Whereas, the Beverly-Salem Legion Post 331 baseball team advanced to the American Legion World Series in Shelby, North Carolina, after securing its first state title since 1976 by beating the Milton Legion Post 114 baseball team on July 28th, 2021, and going further than any team from the Commonwealth has ever gone in the American Legion World Series. And be it resolved that a copy of these resolutions be transmitted forthwith by the Clerk of the Senate to the Beverly-Salem Legion Post 331 baseball team. We also in the Senate, and I believe in the House as well, have passed official citations for all of the coaches and for all of the teammates. And I'd like to just, I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna read the language. The citations are in recognition of winning the Massachusetts state title and Northeast Regionals and bringing great pride to your community. And these are, I'm gonna read the coaches and players, if you let me. Coaches Eric Levine, Matt Levine, manager Michael Levine, Kevin McGrath, and Zach Levine, and players Braden Clark, Nick McIntyre, Will Foglietta, Matt Closey, Noah Guanci, Austin Fogliata, Eric DePiero, Josh Demers, Brendan Frost, Tyler Petrazino, Logan Petrazino, Cooper Gavin, Nick Fox, Christian Morrissey, Lee Pacheco, Jacob Novas, and Jake Miano. So very pleased to be able to be here tonight to recognize this great team and their coaches and their families. And a hearty congratulations from this minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Always great to see you. Keep up the good work. Same with you, Representative Paracella.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tip, for taking time out of your busy schedules to be here. I know how things can get crazy at the State House, but I'm sure the guys appreciate you being here. Okay, we have a resolution from the city council, and I'm gonna read the whole thing because I was fortunate enough to get to know these boys, and they were an incredible group of kids, young adults. Well, some of them are kids and some are young adults. And the dedication that the coaching staff put in was amazing. They just did it, they did a wonderful job, and they made everybody's summer this year in Beverly. Everybody seemed to be following them. So I have a resolution. Beverly-Salem American Legion Post 331. Whereas, Beverly-Salem American Legion Post 331 recently competed, completed a tremendous baseball season that included its state title, a Northeast Regional Championship, and a trip to the American Legion World Series in beautiful Shelby, North Carolina. Whereas, the team was coached by Eric Levine, Matthew Levine, and Kevin McGrath. Mike Levine served, and I met Jake Levine also. Mike Levine served as the team's manager and field general. Manager Levine believed early on that he had a core group of veteran players who could lead this squad to the postseason. Whereas, Post 331 went 5-0 in the state tournament in Quincy, and then went 4-1 in the Northeast Regional Tournament in Worcester to earn a trip to North Carolina. This group of ballplayers was the first team ever to qualify for a World Series at any level in Beverly. Whereas, Tyler Petrazino was named Most Valuable Player in the state tournament. He led Post 331 through all three rounds of the postseason with his timely hitting, solid outfield defense, and his outstanding leadership qualities, and of course, his over-the-top enthusiasm. Whereas, Braden Clark served as the team's ace on the mound, notching two wins in the state tournament, and provided a gutsy outing against Newport, Rhode Island in the Northeast Regional Tournament. Moving to second base after reaching his pitch count, Braden played solid defense and drove in the winning run with a deep drive to the wall and left, sending Post 331 south to North Carolina. I just got the chills on that one. Whereas, Matt Closey served as the team's number-one catcher and leader on the field. Matt was solid at the plate throughout the playoffs and made it his job to get on base any way he could. An unmovable force in the batter's box, Matt was hit by a pitch three times in one game during the World Series play. Whereas, Nick McIntyre played great defense all summer and into the playoffs. His speed and base-running skills kept opposing pitchers and catchers guessing every time he was present on the base paths. Nick also pitched in relief and shut down a solid squad from Newport, Rhode Island to set the stage for Braden Clark's game-winning blast. Whereas, Will Fogliata served as the team's designated hitter and backup catcher throughout the postseason. He was an offensive force at the plate and was rewarded with a spot on the 2021 American Legion World Series All-Tournament Team. His constant focus and intensity was quick to rub off on his younger teammates. Whereas, Austin Fogliata played flawless defense every postseason game in left field. He came up big in clutch situations by getting on base and driving in critical runs. He and his brother Will kept things loose in the dugout and made sure that everyone supported each other when they were at the plate. Whereas, Lee Pacheco joined the team in 2021 and instantly became an impact player. Lee played solid defense at third base and served as the team's cleanup hitter. He pounded opposing pitching, pitchers while driving in crucial runs in Quincy, Worcester, and in Shelby. Whereas, Jake Miano became a top-line starting pitcher during the regular season with his commanding presence on the mound. After getting injured in the second game of the state tournament, Jake remained the loudest voice in the dugout, encouraging his teammates to do their best. Jake was able to return to action in the World Series, pitching well against the tough Michigan team to keep Post 331 in the game. Whereas, Brendan Frost led the team in hitting, played great defense in right field, and did an outstanding job on the mound in relief against Natick in Game Two of the state tournament. Manager Mike Levine called Frost the team's unsung hero. Brendan's bat was on fire during the team's run in North Carolina, and he was also named to the American Legion World Series All-Tournament Team. Whereas, Nick Fox grew exponentially as a player from the previous summer. A natural leader, Nick constantly cheered on, cheered on his teammates and made every one of his at-bats count. Nick had a number of important hits in each round of the playoffs and scored the winning run in the regional tournament against Newport, Rhode Island that sent Post 331 to Shelby, North Carolina. Whereas, Cooper Gavin was hurt during the regular season, but he worked hard during his rehab to be able to join his teammates for their postseason run. Cooper got his chance in the Northeast Regional Tournament against Scrooge Berry and came up huge. Coop pitched six solid innings for the win to keep Post 331 in the winner's bracket. Cooper also got the starting nod against Idaho in the World Series, but a long rain delay got in the way of another solid outing by Coop. Whereas, Post 331 veteran Eric DePiero pitched tremendous during the regular season and continued to do so in the playoffs. Eric was 3-0 during Beverly-Salem's postseason run. He shut down a powerful Leominster team 11-0 in the state tournament, was masterful in a 1-0 win against New York in the Northeast Regional Tournament, and started and got the win in Beverly-Salem's lone World Series victory against Iowa. Whereas, Logan Petrazino was one of the team's youngest players and played solid defense at second base and was a constant presence on the base paths via hit or walk. Logan's bat was especially on fire during the state tournament in Quincy. He recorded a four-hit game against Leominster. Whereas, Noah Guanci, the team's youngest player and usually known for his solid outfield defense, provided an offensive spark against a strong Natick club during the state tournament with two clutch hits and a couple of runs batted in. They were also took the mound admirably when called upon, making four postseason appearances, including two in the World Series. Whereas, Christian Morrissey served as a role player during the season and was called upon to come out of the bullpen in the Northeast Regional Tournament and the World Series. The right-handed flamethrower kept opposing hitters on their toes. He was always the first one to race out of the dugout to warm up his teammates. Whereas, Jacob Novas always remained ready to help out his team and his teammates. During the regular season, he had an outstanding game against Andover. Jacob came off the bench and drove a pinch-hit single to left field against Bangor, Maine in the Northeast Regional Tournament. His hits started a big inning that sealed Post 331's victory in their first game in Worcester. Whereas, Josh Demers is a special ballplayer and with unmatched love for the game of baseball. Josh saw action at second base, third base, and stayed loose in case he was needed on the mound. Josh had a base hit and a run scored in Beverly-Salem's big inning against Bangor, Maine. That's all 17 of them, and all 17 of them did a wonderful job. Therefore, now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the City of Beverly does hereby honor this championship team of the Salem-Beverly American Legion Post 331. We wish them good luck and success in their futures and thank them for a great season, and hereby order the city clerk to spread a copy of this resolution upon city records. Congratulations, boys. Would anybody from the coaching staff like to make, make a comment? Mike Levine has his hand raised.
Yeah, I guess my microphone is better than what my boss tells me.
Okay.
I really appreciate this, both the state and with Kerry and with Joan. I appreciate the, the honors you guys have bestowed upon the team. Paul, thank you for putting this all together with Michael and the city council members. As you said at the beginning, this is definitely a special team. It was a special summer, and I'm very proud of these young men and what they accomplished and what they were able to do in such a short time period. I'm still recovering from it, you know, a month later. So it's, I really appreciate everything you guys have bestowed upon us. We are having a banquet in November, and I welcome the city council. If you'd like to come, you're very much welcome to, to join us, since you'll be cooking, Paul. But again, I appreciate it. The team appreciates it, and hopefully, we can put something together for, for next year's run.
Thanks, Coach. I know Coach Kevin McGrath is on the call. Coach McGrath, do you have anything to add?
Just, thank you, Paul. I'll never forget this summer. Special, special group of kids and a absolute blast work with Mike and his whole other family coaching. I'll never forget it, and I'm looking forward to going back there again. Thanks again, everybody.
Thanks, Coach. Mayor Cahill, I know that you and Mayor Driscoll sent a nice letter to the boys. Do you have anything to add?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. President. So wow. Let me first just say to manager Mike Levine, my Little League teammate from the Patty Construction Red Sox. Greatness to you and have you do so well with this team. And Coach Kevin McGrath, who's not as old as Mike and me, but I've known him a long time and love him. I really am happy for you guys as leaders of the team. To you, young men, I think a lot of us, a lot of us know that experience as players and coaches of postseason runs at the local, the state level. You did it at the regional and national level. That's just amazing. I know you loved it. I know you had a blast, and I'm really happy for you. I see some of your parents. I know they're bursting and really proud of you, and it's just a wonderful feeling to be, to be in the, in the, in the meeting here, looking at all these great faces. I don't want to single anybody out except to say that Eric DePiero, since Eric's mom works at the, at the Council on Aging, and she's here, and so is our Council on Aging Director, Miriam Holak, Eric was interning this summer at the Council on Aging. So a lot of Beverly seniors were tuned in and really hanging on every pitch during your run, and that was fun for all of them and us as well. But listen, fantastic to see you do so well. You made the whole, both of our communities incredibly proud, and congratulations and enjoy.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Always well said. Any members of the council with a quick remark before we move on? Really? That never happens, guys. And Coach Levine did say that we, the boys are having a banquet in November when some of the older kids are back from college. We have a nice copy for all of the kids. Can't lift my shoulder up. Sorry, guys. We have a nice one of these to present to every one of the coaches and the kids at the banquet, Coach. So we look forward to it when you nail down our date, and we'll go from there. And hats off to the City of Shelby, North Carolina. It's amazing how they rolled out the red carpet for these boys, and they were treated like celebrities or rock stars. Everybody from the A-team's there, but I think that the community really developed a special bond with the kids from Beverly because we were the nicest group of guys, right? So I would entertain a motion for the council to approve the resolution.
It's not moved.
Second. And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Absolutely.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers? Hausmann?
A terrific yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
And yes. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in. You're not required, those of you that were here for the resolution, you're not required to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you want to, we'd love to have you. Thank you. Okay, if we were in council chambers now, we would take a five-minute recess to congratulate the boys, but we're not, so we will go, move on right to our agenda. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:45. So before that, let's take care of some business. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our meeting that was held on September 13th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers? Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
I am a yes. Let's go to Communications from his honor, the mayor. Ms. Dixon?
Okay, so I have number 165. Is that right? Yep. Okay. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded two grants from the Massachusetts Seaport Economic Council. $656,000 has been awarded to support the reconstruction of the Commercial Hoist and Fishing Pier at Glover War. Also, $62,400 has been awarded to conduct a feasibility study for recreational and transient floats in Beverly Harbor. Along with requesting the approval of this grant, I am also requesting approval to transfer $71,840 from the Harbor Management Fund along with the transfer of $71,840 from the Reserve for Unforeseen. The combined transfer value of $143,680 will represent the required 20% match. The transfer component of this request will necessitate a public hearing prior to any final action by the city council. These grant awards will facilitate the repair and reconstruction of the Commercial Fishing Pier and help determine whether floating docks are viable for transient moorage and for staging areas for local individuals or charters loading and unloading gear and passengers. I respectfully ask that the city council take action on this combined request by setting a public hearing at your meeting on Tuesday, September 28th, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Is Catherine Barrett here or our grant director?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Council President.
Ms. Barrett?
Thanks. I just wanted to thank the team, the extended team that worked on these two grants, and that is Sean Ciancarelli, Paul Earl, and Don Newman, and myself. We are a team that worked on both of these grants for one of only two communities in Massachusetts that were awarded two grants from the Seaport Economic Council. We actually did just get some news from the Lieutenant Governor today that we got an extra $600 added to the Hoist and Commercial Fishing Pier grant. So the total for the, that grant is $656,000 and $600. So it's always good to get news that you have more grant money than you thought, but that means the match will be adjusted slightly. So I'm not sure if I need to do an addendum communication for the mayor to send to the council, or if that can be amended during the meeting and voted on. The match will, the transfer will be $71,900, and the combined transfer is $143,800. So slightly, a little bit more due to the extra money that we, we learned about today.
Any questions for Ms. Barrett? And I know, Paul, if nobody has any questions, I'll go to Paul Earl from the Harbor Management Authorities here.
Looks like Councilor Copeland.
Oh.
Yeah.
Councilor Copeland, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, and you might deal with this actually at the hearing, but as far as those, those two accounts, the Harbor Management Fund, when we take money from those funds, do we know how much will be still left in those funds, or?
Yep.
Yeah, so I'll defer, defer to our chairman of the Harbor Management Authority, Paul Earl, and he's on the call with us, and he was instrumental in helping us obtain these grants, along with Don Newman, who's also a member of the Harbor Management Authority.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Hausmann? And then we'll go to Mr. Earl.
That's fine.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to congratulate the leadership team that worked on, on getting these grants. I know when I was liaison with the Harbor Management Authority, I think at least six years ago, maybe eight years ago, both of these items were very much topics of discussion, very much long-term goals. I know these have been worked on for a really long time, and so I just want to acknowledge the leadership of, of the team and its chair, Paul Earl, and everyone who worked on this. So congratulations. Really looking forward to this, this happening. Really looking forward to this happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hausman. Mr. Earl.
Okay, good evening, Council President and members and members of the public that are still with us. Harbor Management Authority is very pleased to support the projects funded by the grants and especially give thanks to the Seaport Economic Council for awarding both. We work with the city and consultants in a very seamless way in preparing the applications. I think the fact that it was so seamless was really all due to Catherine Barrett, who really managed the process well, gave deadlines, got stuff out quickly for review, and got the applications in on time. So Catherine, thank you very much. Both projects, both the new commercial hoist pier and the feasibility study for increasing, let's just call it float and mooring capacity in the Glover Wharf area, are included and referenced in the city's 2019 harbor plan and the 2021 master plan. So these have been vetted by the council in some cases before. They've been researched thoroughly over the years, as Scott was mentioning. And we're really very happy to see them come to fruition, to help Beverly now as well as in the future. They support the vibrant and hopefully will help sustain the commercial fishing industry in Beverly, which currently has about 20 commercial boats at the marina that actually go out and fish. There's a waiting list of nine, which is really good for the future of fishing. They represent a net to their haul that comes in of about 4 million, representing about 800,000 pounds of fish and lobster and tuna that they catch during a typical year. And it's an important industry. And to me, who lived here 42 years now, a really nice aspect of the city. So that grant's going to help sustain it because the current hoist pier is a needed replacement, okay? For sure. The feasibility study is something that I'm excited about. That's a very tight area down there, we all know that. So we need to be careful what we do. But at the same time, I don't think we're in a position to rule out options at this point in order to increase commerce to the local businesses that arrives by water. Okay, and if we can provide some ways to allow people to stop by and visit Beverly by water, visit our new restaurant, which hopefully will be open in May. I know Mr. Bloom still plans that. And those folks, I think, when it's not boating season, might come back to Beverly and spend more money. So I think having that kind of capability available down there is very important. It's tight space, we don't have enough. I really wish we could expand either to the right or to the left. But right now, that's kind of like not in the cards. So, you know, we'll see how that goes. As mentioned, HMA is providing half of the matching funds for this project from our capital account as financial support for the projects. And to answer Mr. Copeland's question, if it turns out to be, let's just use 70,000 as a rough number that we contribute, that will reduce our current capital fund to 440,000 by 70, we'll be at 370. So we're still, we make money. I think some of you know this, I was with the council a few months ago. But just briefly, we make money by running the marinas for the city. We pay for Sean, who's the part-time marina manager, and we pay for all the other operating expenses. But we take in close to $200,000 a year, and we can keep really good service and keep everybody happy and only really spend about 100. So we can put 100 into this fund to then reinvest as matching. Or if you look at all the chiropracks around the city now, we've paid for all those. And this is all non, this is all non-taxpayer dollars. So I think it really hopefully helps the city in terms of doing some stuff that perhaps we wouldn't be able to do as much. So I thank the council and the city for their support of what HMA does, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Any other members of the City Council? I am going to ask our Finance Director, Brian Ailes, and Michael Cahill has, I don't know who to refer to first. Obviously, the mayor, Mayor Cahill.
You better call Mr. Ailes first.
Okay, Mr. Ailes, you're the finance guy. Break it down, how are we going to do this?
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that if the council were to take action this evening to set a public hearing, that it reflects the amended amounts that Ms. Barrett noted. We want to make sure that that's the amount that gets acted on by the council as opposed to the original communications. And Ms. Dixon, I can work with your team on this as well. We want to make sure that the amended amounts are what's advertised in the public hearing so that we follow the steps of the law. That's the only point I had to make, unless there's.
And Mr. Ailes, we should do this all together. It looks like our public hearing would be on the 18th of October as opposed to trying to accept the grant now and then have the public hearing for the transfer?
Yeah, I think it would probably be easiest just to do it all at once.
Okay. So Mayor Cahill.
Thanks, Mr. President. I don't want to repeat, I think that both Ms. Barrett and then Mr. Earl spoke really well. I want to say how appreciative we are of Mr. Earl's leadership on the Harbor Management Authority and the whole team over there. And wholeheartedly, a lot of great things going on and have for a number of years. And then the only other thing I want to say, because I think we otherwise are missing an opportunity, Commissioner Collins actually got to vote on these grants, didn't he? Ms. Barrett was in his first meeting. Several months ago, the Lieutenant Governor called and asked us if we wanted to have a representative on the Seaport Council from the city of Beverly. And so Commissioner Collins is now serving on the council. It's actually a real honor. I think these grants would have been approved anyway because they were so incredibly well-prepared and very needed and worthwhile efforts. But it's nice to have Commissioner Collins now sitting at the table on a regular basis with the State Seaport Council.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. As if Commissioner Collins doesn't have enough to do, he's pretty amazing. Good stuff. And I just want to say one more thing about Paul Earl while he's here. Congrats on a successful Harbor Fest last week at Lynch Park. That event wouldn't have happened without all your hard work and your volunteers. So thank you on that also.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for Monday, October 18th, 2021 at 7:30 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers? Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanti?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor Hausman.
Yeah, I don't know, do we need, I guess I defer to you and Mr. Ailes. Do we need to state for the record that the increased amount is this, will be the subject of the public hearing?
I think for clarity of the record, I think it's a good point, Mr. Hausman, counselor.
Okay. In that case, let me take a swing at this, Mr. President?
Of course.
I make a motion to the public hearing to hear Order 165 be a public hearing to accept a grant the amount of $656,600.
Second to Councilor Hausman's amended order?
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers? Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanti?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, especially Councilor Hausman. Okay, we are at our public hearing at 7:45 p.m., Order Number 161. Ms. Dixon, could you please read that order? Or you want me to?
I don't mind, I can do it. Let's see. Do you want me to read the full thing or just the summary?
Just the summary.
Okay, great. This is a Mass DOT, Order Number 161, Mass DOT petition of the MBTA for Communication Conduit Location Plan Number 321823F on Cabot Street.
And is somebody here from the Mass Department of Transportation to talk about this one?
Yes, Council President. My name is Jaime Armendia. I'm a project manager for this project at the MBTA.
And just give us a heads up as to what you would like to do.
Sure. We actually have a slide, I have a member of my staff here as well to present, if that's okay for the council?
No, that's great, thank you so much.
Okay. Ibrahim, can you present that? There's a present now button on the Google Meet.
Sure.
This is great, utility companies never have slides for us.
We try to be a little more prepared than that.
No, that's dynamite, thank you.
Right, so this is a Google Earth map of the affected area. As you can see, this is at the northern end of the Veterans Memorial Bridge. We are, we, the MBTA, are putting in a buried fiber optic network all over the commuter rail. And in this stretch, nor to get across the Danvers River, rather than going underwater and interrupting all the boat traffic, we are working with MassDOT to attach our conduit to the side of the Route 1A Bridge. But that means we need to cross some city streets to get back to the right-of-way. And as you can see on this map, the kind of red, purple line there is where we anticipate putting in our conduit below city streets. This conduit will carry, like I said, fiber optic communications cable. And it'll go from the abutment of the Veterans Memorial Bridge down to Cabot Street, up to the Congress Street intersection, down Ellandwood Court, about half a block, and then crossing an MBTA-owned parcel on the edge of the right-of-way to get back to the tracks. And the yellow area, as you can see here, that is the butters list that we developed is all properties that are within that yellow area on the map.
Thank you, sir. Ward 2 project, any questions for members of the City Council? Councilor Rand, anything?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I was typing me. It was taking a minute. So can you, can you just clarify for me? Because this, this, this project is related to the regional transportation National Grid project, or it's completely separate? Or will you just help me with that?
Sure, it's actually completely separate.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so this, we've met with Mayor Cahill and his staff, I guess, several weeks ago at this point, probably July, to kind of go over the details. But for your benefit, what we are doing is putting in communications fiber on the MBTA tracks all over the commuter rail network for MBTA uses. So we're talking about signal systems, you know, potentially passenger communication systems on the buried fiber network. Through this area, right now, it's all on aerial pole lines. And that turns out not to be so resilient in winter with tree fall. And so we're trying to get that underground at this point.
If I may, I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Of course.
Thank you. So, and can you also just walk me through, is this connected at all to the project from, I don't know, maybe it was two years ago, where there was an upgrade to all of the communication systems for the MBTA?
I'm not sure, I'm familiar with which project you're referring to.
It's like a signaling?
Yes, if it was, so we had a couple of projects that are kind of all interrelated. Positive Train Control might be the one you're thinking of.
Yes.
Yes, so that is a railroad essential safety system required by the federal government. We have successfully installed that everywhere. That was operational as of last August, 2020, across the entire MBTA network. There is, so the federal government said, okay, PTC works best with an upgraded signal system, which we are installing currently on all the north side lines. So we've been doing a lot of work up on the Gloucester Branch most recently, and we'll be getting to the main new report line next year. So that's upgrading the base signal system, which PTC is a safety system on top of. All of that runs on the aerial fiber.
Okay, thank you. And then what else will be, what else will this cable be used for? What type of communications? Is it just kind of working with that signaling? Is it within the, you know, within the train itself?
So yes, it is all going to be, right now, the intended purpose is MBTA vital communications. So safety systems, signal systems, things that need to be protected and are really bad if you get interrupted. So there will be excess capacity that we hope to use for other, like passenger-related purposes in the future. And we are also pursuing, on a side course, we're looking for funding to install commercial fiber that is, you know, dark fiber to be leased to third parties. That is not a funded project at this time. But if we get the money for that, then we'll be installing it at the same time.
Okay. And so there, are there, are there any, this may not be a question for you, but I'm curious about any regulations on installing, you know, fiber optic communication cables and then basically, you know, selling that, that service beyond what you're using it for? Is that something within our city? Is that something that the city regulates, or is that?
It's a state asset, so it's regulated at the state level.
Got it. So there's no, no profit that you'll be, that the state makes from that that comes back to the city?
I'm not aware of any at this time. But again, that is a secondary project that if we get funding for, we'll be back to talk about.
Yeah, that would be interesting to see how that goes and just to sort of dive into that type of fiber optic cabling. I'd like, I think a lot of people in the city would like to explore that a little. Who would I talk to about understanding better the, sort of the profit from that potential project?
So it's, we've done some preliminary stuff, some financial research, look what the market is like. It's kind of hard to answer the question about with real numbers because it's all kind of fictional until we sign up a partner. But we will be looking more closely at that going forward. The MBTA is preparing a procurement for a commercialization partner to look for those funds and determine kind of what the profit margin would be in that activity. I can follow up with you by email, try to get you the right point of contact in the MBTA.
Perfect. And my last question, Council President through you, again, is just what kind of disruption can we expect in that neighborhood for construction?
So we are in the middle of hiring our contractor to perform this work. It will be a design-build project. So there are a couple of options. Our preferred approach, and the one that we have taken to about 30% design, is directional drilling. So we would dig a trench pit, you know, on one end and the trench pit on the other, and then use a drill to connect the dots without disrupting the surface of the street. That is more expensive option, and it is ultimately the decision of our contracting partner to do what is the most cost-effective approach. The other approach would be to open up the road and do a trench, you know, kind of the more traditional utility way. And it depends what's in the road there, which we will need to be mapping out with National Grid, with the city, you know, just to make sure that there aren't too many obstructions. So if there's a lot of stuff in the ground, trenching is probably the best route. You know, if it's a pretty clear path, directional drilling is, you know, a more painless option for the city. You know, we're also working with Mayor Cahill with that, the lot that we are, where we are snagging the left to get back to the right-of-way. You know, the city is working on leasing that from the MBTA for your waterfront parking lot. And so we were, we need to coordinate with the city to make sure that everything happens without too much disruption. So we'll be working with the mayor and his staff on that very closely.
Great. And actually, I believe I'm in, on that a butters list, so hopefully, I mean, if I'm not, I'm sure you could add me to that, but it'd be great to get those notifications.
Sure, I'll make sure to know that. Ibrahim, can you work with Meg to make sure that Councilmember Rand's on the list?
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. President, you mute it.
I never mute. Council Rotundo and Council Hausmann, I'm going to defer to the mayor first, and then we'll come back to you folks. Mayor Cahill?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just, just to kind of build on what Jaime said. As, as Councilor Rand knows, you've talked with the grid team on the 115 KV project, you know that some of that work will be starting soon. Given that there are a number of things going on right here, what you're, in, in the middle of what you're seeing on the screen, we'll be working closely with Jaime and Ibrahim and their team, and I also see Lee here as well. We want to make sure that this is timed up right. Best case scenario is they get in and out before the restaurant opens next summer, because we're trying to nail down those parking spaces. We also know that the three intersection project is at a place where the final work on the intersection at Cabot and Rantoul will be, will be done in the spring. And so, you know, there's a lot there, so managing the different pieces of work there is important to ensure we do well. And Councilor Rand, we, I think best if, if we keep talking about that, make sure that we're all, we're all briefed and on the same page as we go with, with both the MBTA team and the various, well, we got MassDOT with the three intersection project, MBTA here, and National Grid on the other. So lots to coordinate there together. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Let's go to Councilor Rotundo.
I think you actually pretty much answered the question was, is how long, when's the project looking to be started? There is a lot going on down there. So the matter of is, are you planning on staging equipment down there? I know there's been some complaints about other pieces of equipment staged in the parking area, where there's, they're taking up spaces, and we know it's a very premium thing down there currently. So I think those are a couple of other things where there is a lot with the National Grid, with the whole signalization going on, as well as the restaurant, and now we have this project as well, so it just seems it's one thing after another. And I know time-wise, the timeline keeps spreading out. So it was just, you did kind of touch upon that, but you also did say that you would be coordinating within the timeframe of the other two projects. So I think you kind of answered it. Thank you.
Of course. And again, we'll be in touch with the mayor's office very closely as we get our contractor on board and get around to finishing the design and scheduling the work.
Thank you. Let's go to Council Hausmann, please.
Thank you. I know we're approaching eight o'clock, so I want to try to be brief. I really have two questions. One is just to clarify, will any of this assist the T, assist the MBTA in dealing with the issues that periodically crop up with the, the railroad bridge and when it goes out of service? Is this going to sort of help avoid that, or simply help communications around when it happens?
You mean the, the drawbridge?
Yeah, yes.
So this is unrelated to the drawbridge, although some of the vital signals, the communications will travel through this pipeline. So the bridge itself, and we're hopefully at the, at the end of any ongoing capital work there. I know that they've done a bunch over the past year or so to wrap up the rebuild. I don't anticipate, having come from the railroad operations side of the house prior to working capital, I don't anticipate much further disruption on that bridge.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question really has to do with the excess capacity. You talked about for commercial purposes, how that might relate directly to the city. And sort of related to that, I guess I would ask the mayor or you to describe, what is the city directly perhaps benefiting from this project? Are we getting, I think there was some reference, perhaps, additional parking spaces that were, that is on MBTA property that the city is going to have the benefit of for the restaurant? Is that accurate? And secondly, are there any other sort of direct handoff benefits that the city is getting or talking with the MBTA about getting as a result of the permission that the council gives to allow this, you know, enable this project to go forward?
So first off, just want to remind the council, this is a granted location. And so it really is about, you know, the utility work. The parking is a separate matter that Mayor Cahill's been working on, you know, before I've been around. And, you know, we're making sure that's advancing, because we want to get that done, you know, at the same time or beforehand, right? We want to make sure that the city gets use of that if, if the lease works out in a timely fashion. So it's a matter of coordination of projects, but they're not related. As for the fiber itself, the vital system, like the MBTA's primary goal is to stabilize and provide resiliency for our, you know, critical communications and safety systems. So that'll be most beneficial, you know, and when we have a bad winter and a lot of trees fall, and it takes on the overhead wire, right now, that disrupts train service immensely, right? Not just because there are trees on the tracks, but because our signal systems are down, and we have to go limited speed. You know, we can, we can put fewer trains through at any, you know, any given stretch. So we'd be really, that right now is a really disruptive occurrence. With the fiber underground, you know, it'll break a lot less frequently. And so that's, that's the primary goal. As for the commercial side, you know, we are managing it mostly as a separate project. You know, right, because a separate team has to find the funding to make that a reality. It would be my job to put it in if the funding materializes. I will tell you straight, forwardly, that the MBTA is very interested in partners on this, on the, the commercial funding aspect, and customers for that matter. So the MBTA would be, you know, interested in working with the city of Beverly into, in building out that network and making it functional. But right now, again, it's, we're still at the, is there an interest, is there funding for that fiber before we get to the point of who can use it?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President. I know we have an eight o'clock meeting, but I, perhaps later, or we could hear from the mayor on sort of the follow-on responses to my questions. Thank you.
I, I, Mr. President, Council, I think, I think Jaime answered them. I mean, we've been working with the T on the parking for a while, and this is a granted location. This isn't a, you know, they give us something to get something. I don't, I don't think that's what we're talking about here.
Well, I, so I, perhaps you could just elaborate on the number of parking spaces that we're going to end up getting through the.
Oh, oh, sure, sure. Sorry, Council.
That's been a very large conversation in the city.
Yeah, no, absolutely. The, the goal is to try to get 16 or 17 spaces in this, in this space here. It's, it's along the track, and it'll end up being kind of a triangular parcel. So we, you know, we roughed it out engineering-wise, and it looks like we can get about that many spaces. We'll know better when, when we have access to it. So.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, I mean, that, that's, whether I missed it or simply hadn't come up before, no, that's, I mean, that's really very good news to hear, because congestion with parking and traffic down there is, has long been talked about, it being a very large issue when the restaurant comes in. So I, this may be the first I've heard of it, or, or simply missed it before, but very welcome news. So thank you for, for, you know, providing that answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And Council Hausmann, we're going to go into executive session at the end of our meeting, and then we will adjourn from there. Any other members of the council have any questions? Now, do any members of the public wish to ask a question or make a comment about this project? Mr. Horak, name and address for the record, please.
Ed Horak, 5 Congress Street.
Questions?
Yeah, so can you talk to me a little bit about the hours of operation that this project's going to entail? We get a lot of, there's a lot of noise that happens down here on a regular basis now in this so-called quiet zone that exists along the track. And it happens all, you know, all hours of the night. The Kiolas guys are in here banging away, and it's very disruptive. So can you talk about how, what the hours operations look like, and what you might do to, you know, make that less of a burden on us?
Yeah, so I think it's a little premature, but I, and we're going to have follow-up conversations about that when we have a contractor on board. It depends on the construction approach. Either way, we're going to have to develop a traffic management plan with the city. And part of that is, you know, when we can do the work safely. So I think I'm going to have to defer answering that to we have a better idea of that, of what the work plan would, would look like. But, you know, ideally, it wouldn't be a very long or disruptive or noisy operation. Certainly trenching a road can get loud, but we're, we're looking to avoid that if we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. Good to hear, good to hear from you. Hope for all this well. I mean, so is the project that would be done during the day, or is something that would get done at night?
We haven't decided that yet. Both are on the table. And again, that, that would be something that we would look at as we build out the work plan and the traffic management plan along with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Ed.
No, I just said, thank you, Paul.
Oh, okay. Any other members of the public wish to make a comment? Okay, hearing no further questions or comments, I'll close our public hearing. And if we're comfortable taking a vote on this, I would ask Ms. Dixon for a roll call to approve.
Okay, do you want, do we need a first and second, or just a?
I need a first, and then a second, yeah, and then a roll call.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Council Flaherty, and a roll call.
Okay, Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes, and thank you to our presenters for being so thorough. You know, that's really a first. The slide was great. It helped people understand the project. And it's nice, I, I like to ask this to everybody that comes before us from National Grid. The project hasn't been done yet, right?
Correct.
Well, National Grid tries to do that every now and so often, come before us to ask for approval after they've done the work, so. Great process.
We prefer to, to ask first, if we can.
Great, thank you. Now we are going back to communications from his honor, the mayor, unless somebody wants to do anything different. Okay. Ms. Dixon, I think we're on order number 166.
Yes, order number 166. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. Mark Casey of 16 Chapman Street, Beverly, to serve as a trustee of the David S. Lynch Public Parks Fund. Mr. Casey's term will be effective until September 30th, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill.
And please refer that to the Committee on Public Services. 167.
Order number 167. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. Richard Vincent to serve as the Greater Beverly Chamber of Commerce Representative on the Parking and Traffic Commission. Mr. Vincent will fulfill the term of Greater Beverly Chamber Executive Director Leslie Gould on the commission. Mr. Vincent's term will be effective until March 1st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill.
And please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Order 168.
Order number 168. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly Emergency Management Task Force has been awarded a National Urban Search and Rescue Response System grant from the United States Department of Homeland Security and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. This grant funding will be used to support continued development, operations, and maintenance of the National Urban Search and Rescue capabilities at the Massachusetts Task Force 1 site in Beverly. The National Urban Search and Rescue Response System provides funding for 28 national task force staffed and equipped to assist state and local government, local governments conduct around-the-clock search and rescue operations following a presidentially declared major disaster or emergency under the Stafford Act, e.g. earthquakes, tornadoes, floods, hurricanes, aircraft accidents, hazardous material spills, and catastrophic structure collapses. When deployed, these task forces support state and local emergency responders' efforts to locate survivors and manage recovery operations. Massachusetts General Lodge, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayoral approval before any grant earmarks, donations, or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your meeting of the city council on Tuesday, September 28th, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill.
And I know that Mark Foster is here, but let's start with our grant director, Catherine Barrett. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, President Guanci. This is the annual federal grant for our Mass Task Force 1 site up at 43 Airport Road. And they do a fantastic job up there, as everyone knows. I'm going to defer to Mark Foster to say a few words about this grant and his operations and his team. So, Mark? I think you're muted.
Mark, there you go.
Okay, now, how's that? Test 1, 2, 3?
Good job.
Our grant is funded through, it's called a cooperative agreement funding, which we agree to. This grant comes yearly in a cooperative agreement. It's a, pays for all of our, our training and preparedness. It's a preparedness grant. There's also another grant is called a response grant, which pays separately when we go places. And that's a different grant, but this is the preparedness grant. It's a three-year grant. It's used three years so that, you know, they can overlap. So if we have a project that may take more than a year to complete, we can, whoops, we can do that. Can't think what else I need to say. Go ahead. Any questions?
I have, Mayor Cahill would like to say something.
Yes, Mike. Thanks, Mr. President. I just want to say, not specific to the grant before you right now, but Mark is always very modest and very matter-of-fact, and I just want to point out for, for you folks and for people watching that the task force, the Mass Task Force was, what's the right word, Mark? Mobilized. Mobilized twice during Hurricane Ida. First 80, 80 members were dispatched down to Louisiana, and then a few days later, a smaller group, mostly because most of their equipment had, was, was with them in Louisiana, but then a smaller group got mobilized to New Jersey. So just the most recent examples of all the really incredibly important work they do, from the local right up to the national, to keep people safe.
Oh, thanks, Mike.
Council Feldman?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I was wondering in terms of the, the amount of the grant, if that's in line with what we've received in the past, or if it's been expanded, and what was budgeted for, because you said it was an annual grant. Because I know costs have changed, and you've had the pandemic, so just wondering.
This grant has been about the same after 9/11. 9/11 went up significantly to about a million dollars. It's been consistently that way ever since 9/11. Occasionally we get a little bump up and down, but it's not a lot. This year, there was a little bit more because there wasn't any travel last year, so they moved some money over from last year. But it winds up being about $100,000 a month, which we draw down and spend simultaneously. And the city will put out 100, we take 100 down. And yes, that's about the, it's been the same almost for coming on 20 years now.
Thank you, and thank you for all your hard work. You really.
Thank you very much. We appreciate this. Appreciate your help.
Before we move on, Richard T., you can have your campaign signs behind you. If you're going to watch it during the meeting, please put them down. Thank you. Any other members of the council have any questions? Uh, any other members of the council have any questions, but either Ms. Barrett or Mr. Foster? Council Rand?
Thank you. Um, just real quick, can you, um, Mr. Foster, can you just give me a sense of what the um, the training, like trainings, example of trainings, and then maybe do you purchase equipment for preparedness too?
This grant, I think, has about uh ninety thousand dollars we plan to spend on equipment purchases. And that includes a, you know, uh, replacing our vehicles. Our vehicles start to get old. So we have a vehicle, we try to do one vehicle every two years or one vehicle a year if we can. Also, uh, our um, our equipment starts to uh, mainly the issue we have is the equipment just getting timing out. We have our air cylinders that have to be replaced every twenty, every ten years. We have some equipment that's uh, our airbags all became near end of life at uh twenty years. So there's about an equal amount that's replacing equipment that we just have that is is timed out because of uh the um life of the equipment. And uh then on training, we spend, we don't spend any money on training for people. There's no time, meaning people train because they volunteer to come in. So we spend our training on mainly uh the equipment we use during training. Uh, we do feed them. And but they do uh, so we pay a little bit for food and also new training props when we build a prop or if we have to buy equipment to do that expands during the training. We do a major training every month on the third Wednesday of every month. Anybody wants to come up, you can come up. And I have none of the third Wednesday. It's a sad day. And um, this year we'll be going to Camp Ethan Allen, hopefully next month for our annual MOBEX, which we take the whole team, we move up to Vermont, we go there for three days, we come back. And that simulates uh a deployment, so people can get their feeling for how to deploy.
Wow, thank you. Um, so I've, I wanna just ask you about that invitation. You said the third Wednesday of every month you do.
Third Wednesday is the training meeting and that then on that Wednesday, we determine we're gonna do that sad day. So it's the sadly following the third Wednesday. It's kind of a weird deal, but that's the way it works.
That makes sense. And are you saying that that anyone can go up and?
Well, not anyone, but certainly anybody who was interested, I'll have them come as my guest and we'll take you up there and we'll show you what goes on.
Okay. And then I think my last question is just that, is it, do we, so Task Force One is a state operation, so are we, do we accept this funding because we're, you're housed in Beverly?
Actually, it's not a state. We get no money from the state of Massachusetts.
Okay.
The money all comes to the city of Beverly.
Okay.
We we can use the equipment whenever we want within the city. The city owns the equipment. It's titled to the city. And uh we have an agreement to go work for the federal government when we have to. We use all this equipment locally if we have to, or in uh, we work for the state or we go um nationally. Uh, it's kind of like, we're like the national guy, day-to-day, we're working the city, we're here. When they give us a mission to go somewhere, they'll write a paperwork, they'll federalize, we'll leave the state. They always cover the city. We also have a uh, an operation up called Near Rack, which is a self-funding where we have a bunch of equipment, I think, uh, signboards you see around the city that say Near Rack. That's stuff that we might maintain, is then by our task force also.
That's great. Thank you so much. We're really lucky to have you here in Beverly and to uh, um. It's, it's amazing being here and answering those questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rand. Uh, any other members of the council have a question for Ms. Barrett or Mr. Foster? Quick one for you, Mark. Uh, I know, I know you've been doing this since at least two thousand. When did you start?
Nineteen ninety-two. Well, as a team, we uh, we filed for a grant with the city of Bev- for the federal grant, the first time it came out was in nineteen ninety-two. We actually got accepted in ninety-three. And I believe we got a chatter from the federal government around ninety, mid ninety-three. And we've been doing it since ninety-three.
Good for you. Thank you for everything. Um, I would entertain a motion to accept the grant.
So, so moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Now let's move on to communications from other city offices and boards.
Okay, number one sixty-nine.
Yeah.
The Honorable City Council, I am requesting the approval to have one day of early voting for the November second, two thousand and twenty-one municipal election. Early voting will be Saturday, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, from nine AM to one PM at City Hall, one ninety-one Cabot Street, Beverly. Sincerely, Lisa Kent, City Clerk.
Um, any questions or comments in this one? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve Ms. Kent's request.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Um, I just, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I couldn't get my me going fast enough. I do have a question, if that's okay?
Of course.
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering, given the low turnout in the preliminary, and I know they're different animals. Um, I I was just wondering how you came to make this decision, just wanted to pick your brain, just in terms of it. It's not the Saturday before the election, i- it feels like. And just to try to understand how difficult it is to have early voting, because it felt like we had such success with early voting last year. So just to understand where you're coming from.
Ms. Dixon?
Yeah, so I can try to answer some of that um for Lisa, but um, basically, as far as we've seen and a lot of our colleagues and other clerks departments have seen, early voting hasn't actually increased turnout. Um, it is another option and it makes it more accessible for some people and easier. But in the last elections where they've had it, it didn't really increase the turnout that much itself. Um, so that was, we were trying to balance not having to hire too many extra staff with also, so doing a Saturday, our office can come in and staff it ourselves without being open to the public for other services like birth certificates and things like that, so we can focus on doing that. Uh, because we don't get funding from the state for local elections, we only get it for state and presidential elections, so we are working within our own city budget this year. Um, and also, I think the idea was that a Saturday might be a little bit easier for people who will work regularly during the week. Um, and then as far as the Saturday before, typically for state elections, I don't know if you've noticed, but they, we end the Friday before the election, because we have to have time to print our books for check-in for Election Day, and we have, there's a lot of packing and processing that has to go into getting everything ready. Um, and so usually, like, when there's been two weeks of early voting, say before the presidential, it would be for two weeks, but it would end the Friday before the Tuesday. That would be the last day. Um, just to allow offices, clerk's offices to prepare everything to go out again on Tuesday, because we have to take in all the information and the ballots that were processed through early voting in person, and we have to package all of that and get all the data into our system so that it's ready to go on Tuesday.
Thank you for that explanation. I I appreciate it. Um, and then the other piece of this that, you know, because I'm just naturally one person who believes that we ought to make voting as easy and accessible as humanly possible. If it were me, there'd be tons of early voting, you know, it just, it's just. Well, yeah, but the other question that I have too is just about the election generally. Um, what is the city, and this can go to you, Ms. Dixon, but also to the mayor in terms of making sure that the words out there about the early voting and about all the ways we can vote and just about Election Day itself. Um, just to try to make it more accessible and understood just across the city. Thank you.
Sure, so we actually try to keep the mayor out of that as much as possible, because he is running. Um, not that we don't try to keep him in his office in the loop, but we um don't necessarily want him to be sending out those messages. Um, but we have a new page on the website we put up this year, actually, that it's just under in a few spots you can find it, I think, on the Learn More tab at the top, it says Elections. And it's at the bottom of the main homepage as well, and it's also, you can link to it from the clerk's page, but it says information about the upcoming election, and we try to update that regularly with who's going to be on the ballot, how to ask for a vote-by-mail application or or absentee ballot. Um, if, you know, as soon as, if this and the warrant get approved, we'll put those on probably tomorrow or Thursday this week, get those uploaded there so people can see them. And it kind of has a lot of the details, as well as links to the Secretary of the State's website, where people can check their voter registration status. Um, or there's some other options on their website, things that people can do, or if they need to just update their address, things like that. Um, we have talked some to, I believe, Jocelyn and our IT department to see if we can get a banner on the website closer to the election. I'm not sure where we're at with that. I know we did that last year for the presidential. I can't remember if we did it for this uh, September primary last year or not, but uh, so we have talked about some of that. Um, I'm not sure.
That's great. That sounds very helpful, and I think a a banner or or something on the main page of the website, just announcing the election and how you can vote is excellent. And I'm also just wondering, do you ever reach out? We have uh, Mary Ann Holak here on the line. Um, oh, that's great, Jocelyn. Do you ever reach out, say, to the um Council on Aging?
Yeah, so Lisa was actually at the Council on Aging today. Uh, so she went there today with some flyers of information, and she brought a stack of, uh, I know she brought a stack of vote-by-mail. She may have also brought a stack of voter registration cards, I can't remember, but she brought some paperwork to leave there as well. And I know Lisa has the um, the City Clerk Facebook page, where she also will post updates, you know, if there's maybe there's a deadline coming up or something going on, you know, she'll post an update there for people who follow that.
Good effort. Thank you very much for that detail.
Of course.
Thank you, Council Ames. Thank you, Mr. Eric. The banner will be up tomorrow. Great. Um, we had a first, we have a second, and now we're on a roll call.
All right, Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes, and Ms. Dixon, great job answering those questions.
Thanks.
Uh, where are we now? We are on order number one seventy.
Okay, order number one seventy. Uh, this is for the two thousand and twenty-one warrant for the municipal election. Dear Honorable City Council, attached is the warrant for the above-referenced election for your review and approval. Note that this follows previous warrants in a format provided by the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Election Division. Thank you. Sincerely, Lisa Kent, City Clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. I would entertain a motion to approve Ms. Kent's request.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Um, Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Order one seventy-one.
Okay, sorry, this whole writing and reading at the same time thing, I'm still working on it.
That's okay.
Uh, order number one seventy-one. Dear Honorable City Council, I am asking for your approval to delegate responsibilities for answering the open meeting law complaint that was filed by Joseph Kane dated September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one pertaining to the City Council's September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting to the City Solicitor's Office. Sincerely yours, Paul M. Guanxi, Council President. And I think Jesse Dole is going to speak on this.
Mr. Dole.
Thank you, Council President. Um, technically, out of the open meeting law, uh, the uh, the council would need to actually vote it. Excuse me, actually meet in the executive session that's on the agenda tonight prior to actually um delegating authority to um respond to the complaint. So uh, my suggestion would be that we we hold this till next Monday's meeting for an actual vote by the by the council.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Dole, and we'll meet in executive session to discuss that further at the end of our meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so we will hold that. Uh, order number one seventy-two.
Okay, order number one seventy-two. Oh, this is a communication from, I believe, the Senior Center.
Yes.
Um, okay, all right. So would you like me to read the whole letter?
Uh, you could do that, and then we'll, uh, maybe Ms. Holak is here, so let's have a few comments from her at the end.
Okay, sounds good. Dear Mayor Cahill, at the Council on Aging Board meeting on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, we held a discussion about the American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA, and how this funding could support older adults who were adversely impacted by the COVID pandemic and its ongoing effects effect on their lives. We respectfully ask that you consider prioritizing the projects included herein as you move forward with funding decisions. So, uh, number one, support and fund programs that provide for access to healthy foods and housing options for older adults who are living in Beverly. Two, return program and office space currently used by the Board of Health to the Senior Center for programmatic and administrative use. As a board, we have been troubled by the loss of program space for use by older adults, uh, older adult participants, and we feel strongly that it's time to both return the space and refurbish it for senior center use. Funding will be needed for the refurbishment of this space. Three, provide funding for a housing outreach specialist to assist those needing to move to senior housing or other more affordable places as they are unable to afford the taxes on their single-family homes or their rent in privately-owned apartment buildings. Four, provide funding to refurbish the dining room area of the Senior Center to allow seating for four instead of eight individuals and install more energy-efficient lighting to make the space safer for those of low vision and those who are aided by canes and walkers. Uh, I, I think the numbering, this says number one, but it could be number five, provide funding for building improvements at the Senior Center parking lot, HVAC system, and lighting. These improvements could position the Senior Center to be more functional and accessible to the growing number of older adults in the community. Create the infrastructure for an age- and dementia-friendly community designation by AARP and the World Health Organization. This would allow for many of the services we feel are necessary to make Beverly inclusive for all ages to be implemented under one umbrella. This could include a handyman program, technology center, training opportunities for businesses that serve older adults, transportation for all ages, elder, an elder affairs office, similar to the school-based police officers. Consider funding a handyman program so that older adults living in single-family homes could have an affordable means to make their homes safer as they continue to age in place. This would include working with the fire department or others to make sure every home has working smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Provide funding for a citywide technology center slash storefront so that all those who need assistance learning how to use their devices or get connected to the internet can be served. Coordinate city transportation services and or shift to an on-demand transportation model for all residents. Assign an elder affairs police liaison to support older adults with scams, abuse, self-neglect, driving cessation, and other concerns of those aging in place in Beverly. We understand that Beverly, as a large and diverse community, has many needs and also many leaders and visionaries who wish to fund and support projects that will support the health of the community for many years to come. From our perspective, we also need to find and support those living among us today as they strive to achieve healthy aging that is affordable, accessible, safe, and fulfilling. Thank you for your consideration of our priorities. We would surely welcome an opportunity for more dialogue with you and your team. Sincerely yours. And it has the signatures of the members.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Holak, any additional comment or two?
Um, I, I would just like to say thank you, Christine, for doing such a great job reading through that letter. Um, and also that, um, thank you for uh, taking the time to hear from the Council on Aging Board. Um, they're a great group of people who have been very concerned about um, the well-being of older adults in Beverly, especially throughout the pandemic. And I think I, I think I told you back in uh, at my budget hearing that we had opened twenty-seven housing cases, thirteen of them reportable to elder of, um, to the elder abuse program um, back in the spring. And last Monday, we actually had three um homeless individuals, independent of one another, show up at the Senior Center looking for help. Um, and so most of our staff time right now is being really focused on the the basic needs of housing and food um, for many of the older people living in the community. And I, I think they're feeling very vulnerable to both the ongoing concerns around the the uh COVID Delta variant. Um, but also, you know, what does the future look like for them in the city as as we grow? as, as we grow and try to support all ages? And, you know, as much as, you know, I think we all love our schools, we need to all love our seniors as well. And I do think that we need to be more intentional about how we're serving the older folks who live in Beverly. The baby boomers have really, you know, come of age. And we've been predicting it now for a while, but our baby boomer population has come of age. And sadly, the homelessness situations we're seeing are in a younger population of older people, so the 60s and the early 70s. And these people could live for 15 or 20 more years, God willing, maybe 30 years. And, and right now, today, they don't have a foundation to support them. And we have wonderful community partners. I can't say enough about Sue Gabriel and her T-Bet bootstraps. And I'm hoping that some of this ARPA funds really goes to support their work as well. But a housing specialist, even for the time that the funding is available, could really get us through this really tough time where people are struggling with finding new living arrangements. You know, people were evicted even during the pandemic when they weren't supposed to be. You know, landlords died, family members wanted their tenants out so they could renovate. We've helped all kinds of people in all kinds of situations. And it just keeps growing. And I think if we could get the funding for a handyman program, then we actually could have a housing specialist who would also be the person who could help people, you know, get their bathrooms handicap accessible, you know, help them find someone to put in a grab bar. And I talked to Don Preston about this too, and he's already doing it in Danvers and in Peabody. So I just have to ask, why can't we also do this in Beverly for the people who live there? And, you know, you all know I'm passionate about the subject of older adults in Beverly, so I will be quiet now. But I do thank you for, for listening and, and thinking about how we can be intentional in moving forward and helping seniors in Beverly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holak. Councilor Ames?
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your letter. Of course, we all understand here that seniors took a massive hit during COVID, right? Their, their lives were on the line. So this is a long list. And, you know, if I had it my way, we'd do it all. But I was wondering if you could speak to a couple of things. Number one, were a couple of priorities that you really feel are most important. So as these conversations move forward, we just understand where you're coming from.
Sure.
And the second is, there's a lot in there about the space that the Board of Health is taking. And just to understand, we have the mayor on the line too, what the, what the practical options are, because it does feel like you are pinched. But there are probably some practical realities to that too. So, and there might be some creative solutions moving forward as well.
State, Councilor Ames, I would say that, you know, we lost our, our computer lab to the Board of Health over the pandemic. And technology was one of the biggest concerns that we had with reaching older adults throughout the pandemic is their inability to access the technology that everybody else was using. We saw that with people trying to make, you know, talk about an ageist state decision to make all the vaccine appointments online appointments. And older adults didn't have the capacity to make those appointments on their own. They needed help. And our staff was really able to help a lot of people get those appointments. But now, you know, we had a very small technology lab, but we had one, and now we, now we don't. We also, you know, had support groups that met in the space that the Board of Health has taken over. We had an older batter's women's support group that met every week there. We had an AA group that met there. So it, it's just an all-purpose space that we, we lost. But I think about my friends at the Board of Health. I've loved having Bill Burke in the building with me. But, you know, we know the police lived, worked in, and, and lousy headquarters for a lot of years, but I don't see that the Board of Health needs to do that if there's another option, because their working conditions right now really are not adequate for their needs. And, and, and it's pinching us too, in being able to provide some services that we think we should be providing on site.
Thanks. And of that other list in terms of?
Well, housing, you know, housing specialist, extra housing staff person, I think is really important, even if it is just for a time period of, you know, as long as the ARPA funds are available. We can't do outreach because all we're doing is helping people fill out housing applications. And then they're finding out that the waitlist is two years, you know? And, and so then it's, what are they going to do in the next two years when their landlord said, you know, I'm selling this apartment building and you need to move, kind of thing? So we're just, we've seen it all. And the other thing we've seen is that seniors' cognitive abilities have also declined over the pandemic. Of course, not everybody. Some people have thrived, but other people have had problems with coming, coming back to driving, coming back to, you know, exercising, and just, you know, it's, it's hard to watch.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file Ms. Holak's letter.
Sub move.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guancey?
Yes. We have no communications, applications, or petitions, so let's move on to unfinished business from a previous meeting. That's order 143, Ms. Dixon. Do you have it? Do you want me to read it? You got it.
And so this is order number 143, a grant of $12,606,097 in American Rescue Plan Act from Massachusetts Executive Office for Administration and Finance to help with COVID pandemic-related needs.
And I know that some members of the council wanted to wait on this until after we, after the public meeting. Mayor Cale, do you want to talk about how that meeting went?
I think it went well. I think it was, it was, it was the beginning of a conversation. We received follow-up from several different representatives of some of our local nonprofit stakeholder groups after that meeting, as I requested. So we've got some proposals and some thoughts to work with. You know, speaking just for a minute to, to what you were just looking at. As, as I think you all know, this is a bit off topic for a sec, but as I think you all know, the next capital project after the police station has been meant to be the renovation of the old police station, which, when complete, will allow us to bring inspectional services and the Health Department back into the City Hall campus. You also know from spending time in City Hall that even pre-COVID, the the crowdedness of some of our offices really hasn't lent itself ideally to, you know, to optimal work conditions, and it's been even tougher with COVID. So, so that renovation of the old police station is really job one. One of my concerns with our Health Department is I haven't wanted to move them twice. And, and the hope is that they'll, you know, their long-term home is going to be ready for them in two and a half, three years. At the same time, and this does come back to, to ARPA funding, it's clear to us, and we, we've talked about it at the public meeting, Mr. President, back to what you asked me to discuss briefly. At the public meeting, we talked about it, as well as in individual and smaller group conversations with some of you folks. And that is that public health and how it's delivered is something that's really in need of reinvention. And so it's clear that the model that most smaller cities and towns have used for quite some time isn't sufficient. So, you know, we look at, we look at some of the needs that have shown themselves and will need to be staffing, will need to be adding staffing to our Health Department. Some of that may be temporary, as we address some of the, you know, direct and hopefully temporary impacts of the pandemic, but some of it may prove out to be longer term. Similarly, Ms. Holak and I spoke this morning about an email she sent me yesterday, and she referenced it. She gave me several examples in that email yesterday of, of housing instability and concerns that seniors are bringing through the, you know, through the door at the Senior Center to the staff. And it's clear that, again, some of this may be temporary staffing needs, and some of it may prove out to be longer term. I would say as, as our senior population continues to grow, you know, we're going to see some longer-term staffing needs beyond what we've got in place. So, you know, the, the meeting itself, Mr. President, I think was a great start in terms of the community weighing in and knowing that we want to hear more on a number of, number of topics. And I, you know, as, as I've said to all of you, and I've tried to say to anybody who listen, you know, the, the way this grant was created legislatively, it's the executive branch that makes those final decisions on expenditure. But this is unique. This is something that none of us hope we experience again, the, the need for this kind of federal money to come in this way. And so it's my desire, and I know Mr. Ailes as well, that there really are a number of kind of running ongoing conversations as we determine how best to utilize this money now, in the coming months, and over the next three and a half years, and even longer. Because as, as we know, on, on some of the capital front, it's, it's obligation by December 31, 2024. So there's, this is really an ongoing effort, and I think it, you know, it benefits the community, and it really only makes sense that it be a shared conversation and, and set of decisions. The decisions have to be made at various points along the way. I think I've also said, and any one of you could say the same thing, because, you know, it's, it's human nature that not all decisions get made by acclimation or, or by consensus. But, you know, it's, it's our intent to be as, as, you know, collaborative, inclusive, and transparent as we can be in, in how these decisions get made.
Thank you, Mayor Cale. Any other comments or questions before I ask from Councilor Ames?
No, thank you. I was, I, I do have a couple of questions. I'm glad to hear you speak to the department, the Health Department, because I think you're on point. I think the world has shifted, you know? And fortunately, the city's received a decent amount of support from the state and the feds to try to get you through this. And I think that even just, even some, I know you hate to move them again, but even temporary, you know, office space, just to make sure that the Council on Aging is working as well as it can, is probably, because it is an option, because it's a hub of services. I was wondering if you had, when we sat down, you talked about, and you could have changed where you're coming from, somewhere around $8 million of this to be used sort of as work, not so much service related, but more, you know, on infrastructure. Are you still sitting in that place?
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I just want to thank you for the first observation and then the question. So let me take them in that order. What I, what I meant to say, and I forgot, as I was just talking a couple minutes ago, was we, we don't want to move the Health Department twice. At the same time, we have been looking at some space that, that some of our police personnel have been in recently, and now no longer need. For potentially moving, you know, one or two or, or of the Health Department employees to wholesale pick up the Health Department and move them doesn't make sense. But I think there can be hopefully some relief of some of that extra space they've needed to use, that can be turned back to the needs of the seniors in coming weeks and months, if we're able to formalize using some other space that, that is not currently needed by, you know, we, we had, we had Community Impact Unit and other folks in other spaces. So we're, we're looking at those. And we've, I've already talked with Mr. Burke about some of that possibility. And then to your question about the, how much gets spent programmatically, how much gets spent on infrastructure? I think the, the best way for us to look at it is we, we need to spend on program and services what we need to spend. And, and that'll only come clearer over time. Some things are showing themselves immediately. Will they need to be funded for three and a half years? Will, you know, will we find other needs as we go? Yes, I'm sure. And I think so that maybe the, the best answer is we'll collectively try to determine what needs to be spent on services and programs and make sure we put that money to that effort. And then as much money as we can put to infrastructure, there's a lot of eligible and appropriate infrastructure that needs attention, and I think that's really the best way to look at it. As much as we can put to infrastructure, we should, and as much as needs to go to programmatic needs and services, needs to go. So that, that's part of why we don't want to spend it all in one fell swoop. You know, we want, we want to kind of take a look at what's needed in the near term, what may be needed projected out over three and a half years in a given department, make some infrastructure expenditures in the near term, hold some back. So I, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a, and Mr. Ailes is better than, than anybody I know at, at managing that type of balance as well.
Thank you. I asked at the last meeting that you put on the city website how we had spent last year's dollars, and I looked up there today and I didn't see it. And in fact, I looked on the finance page and I didn't see a link to the 22 budget, and I just saw a financial statement from 2014. And so I understand completely your desire to be, as you said, collaborative and transparent. But to my fellow colleagues, there are a lot of times where, I mean, the past two years, I haven't seen that. And I just have to say, I want to bring this money in. I want to bring it in fast. I want to have a collaborative process. But I honestly am just a bit concerned, because I just think that as a government, our primary responsibility is to clearly explain how tax dollars are spent, because we want to make sure that information is easily accessible to residents and businesses throughout the city. And that's how we're accountable. It's going to be our number one priority. And I just feel as, you know, because we want people to be trusted with our tax dollars. We want to make sure that people feel good about the way we spend things. And I just worry without our telling the story, that the story can be told without enough useful information. And personally, to my colleagues, I mean, if you just go to the town of Danvers website, and I encourage you to open a window and type in their financial summit, and they, they just Google Danvers Financial Summit, and you can see a blueprint of how their goals and how they spend their money and how they spend their money, you know, across other, you know, compared to other communities. And when we look on page 22, they'll give you their financial expenditures per capita. They'll tell you exactly what the definition of that is. And then if you go to the total expenditures per capita by a whole bunch of communities, Burlington, Limfield, Andover, North Reading, Reading, Danvers, Peabody, Salem, Wakefield, Stonem, and Beverly, we're at the bottom. And that's 2019. And I just, you know, worry. And I just, you know, worry. I just worry about the decisions that, you know, to my colleagues and the people at home, sometimes that what come out of this administration. I mean, and if you look at just a couple of the two, two thousand twenty-one numbers, Beverly, we spent, and I went on the DLS website because I just didn't want to trust what Danvers said. In two thousand twenty-one, our per capita expenditures were thirty-nine oh eight. Burlington was fifty-three, thirty-two. Danvers was forty-seven, twelve. Gloucester, forty-six, seventy. Hamilton, forty-six, fifty-two. Middleton, forty-one, twelve. Peabody, which has had a heck of a time, was thirty-four, eighty-two, less than us. And Salem at forty-one, sixty-four. And, you know, if you go back to their two thousand seventeen study, we're again at the bottom. And they even go into public safety. Public safety, we're at the bottom. Public Works, we're at the bottom. And per pupil spending, this is two thousand seventeen, we're at the bottom. And you know, if you look at the state, we're below the state average. In two thousand nineteen, the state average of spending per pupil was seventeen thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and we spent fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-one. And I, I want to send this out. I want to get it done. Our teachers are paid less. The average teacher pay is eighty-two in the state. Our average teacher pay is seventy-five. And I feel like the streets don't get paved, the sidewalks don't get fixed. A lot of the staff don't make living wages. And I just want to have. And we have tons of money. It's not like we don't have money. You know, in, in two thousand, in two thousand nineteen, the July, the June thirtieth cash report reported seventy million dollars. And two thousand twenty, it was eighty-one and a half. And the, the, you know, if you look on the state website, the September, you know, the June report this year is due on September thirtieth. So I, I don't know how to fix this. I want this to happen. I want us to work together. But I want trash cans. And I want the Council of Aging to be okay. And I just believe that in this city, we don't spend enough money on us, on services. And I just, I'm almost out of here. You know, this is, but I think I just have to say once and for all, you know, my guess is that June thirtieth cash number will come in if it was eighty-one and a half, went from seventy to eighty-one and a half with the federal funds, that it's between eighty-eight, ninety-five million dollars. And of course, that's a snapshot. It's the same snapshot as you would get from the COVID numbers. You know, it goes up and down. It's not, but over, you know, the past ten years, it's, it's steadily increased. We have money. But I just, you know, I think we need more police officers. I think, you know, and so how these COVID dollars get spent and the decisions these, this, this administration makes. You know, traditionally for me, haven't added up to enough services for the people who live here. And like I said, I, I want this money in. And I'm happy to hear that you want to be transparent, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Cahill, and you want to be collaborative. But my question truly is, is how, if last year, we didn't even get the numbers on the website? You know, it's a plea to my colleagues that accountability for all of us, we all serve, we're all elected. And it's accountability is the only way for us to move forward. You know, and it, it's not just in finance. I have no idea what the Sustainability Director that I supported or the, or, or the Equity Inclusion Director has done. I, I, I just want.
Ms. Rins, can I interrupt for a moment?
You bet.
I think you, you've made your point. You've gone on long enough and Counsel Copeland has been very patient. So can I?
You bet.
Move on to him? Thank you. Counsel Copeland?
If I could, Mr. President.
Oh, please, Mayor Cahill, I'm sorry.
Counselor Ames, I, I, I would love if, if you would share with me the graphs that you were showing. Because I do want to understand what you're speaking to.
I've shared this with Mr. Ailes from the beginning of when I was, was elected.
Okay. Well, then I'll, I'll check with him and get a look at the graphs that you held up to the camera just then. Thank you. And I do want to say, when, when we met recently, and Mr. Ailes said it during budget, and when we met recently, we agreed that we would be trying to put some, some more materials up for the public to see. I'm going to tell you that in the very near term, in the last month and a half, there have been some, there have been some unavoidable severe shortages in the staffing in Mr. Ailes departments. They are very short term. They're being remedied. But it has made it really impossible to, to do more than try to just keep up day to day. And that, that is very near term and, and it will, it is being remedied. I'll also say that that's not necessarily directed or directly related to this, but in, in terms of recognizing the significant need for ARPA fund management and the ability to, you know, to, to share out the information that we're all looking to with the ARPA funds, Mr. Ailes has recommended and I've approved of bringing in some temporary significant, temporary additional help in the office on the ARPA management dispersment of the ARPA funds specifically. And that's an example of something that we want to put in motion and needs this council's vote before we can, can actually act on that. So, you know, just as an example. And so, you know, look, we, we do want the same things and I appreciate your passion on, on the, 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 you know, the issue of sharing the information and Mr. Ailes has stated his commitment to doing so. And we just, we just need to get caught up in ahead of some things in the department, in the combined finance departments to get there. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Copeland?
Yes, I thank you, Council President, and I apologize to everyone. I lost my computer with the, the.
Andrew White.
There you are. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Okay. So my, I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and Mr. Ailes. Because last time we were here, I brought up that, you know, we had done the things that we said we would do before we would go ahead and authorize the funds. Since then, you've, you've had the, the summit and the meeting with the counselors. And the, the greater part of that is just to show that, you know, other people can get involved and regardless of what decisions are made, your voices will be heard and your voices are important. Which for a democracy is very crucial for us to move forward. And also I think it allows us to identify some blind spots, just like we saw with the Council on Aging, things that we might not have been thinking about before or, or had an understanding of. So we get a better perspective on. So I, I just wanted to say, as far as that, I, I appreciate you following through with that and that getting done. And I know there's more to come. And I also agree with, as we move forward, the transparency aspect of it, the more that we can do, the better. But, but I just wanted to say thank you for completing that portion of it. And it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Counsel Copeland. Counsel Hausmann?
Yeah, I'll just be a, a brief. While I've been, you know, listening to the, to the dialogue on the subject of, you know, transparency and, and, and collaboration. I went to the town of, I had two computers set up, one that I'm using for this and one I'm using to, to follow documents on another computer. So I went to the Town of Danvers and they do have a very, I, I would say user-friendly set of, you know, easy to find funding, excuse me, excuse me, financial information, including their American Rescue Plan Funding Table with you know, project category and cost and with, with an accompanied pie chart in color and so forth. So I obviously haven't had a chance to really look at this much at, at all. But it goes into a, a fair degree of, 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 you know, fairly layman-friendly ways of, of communicating information. So, you know, I, I think we're all on the same page. We really, as government, you know, officials, as elected officers, we want to be able to communicate our decision-making to the community. So I'm, I'm hopeful that as part of our expenditure of the ARPA funds, we do in fact hire whatever assistance Mr. Ailes and his department needs and perhaps including the IT department, specifically to allow us to, to get some of the information about this twelve million dollars up on our website so that people can readily you know, access it as a matter of transparency. So I, I appreciate the, I appreciate the discussion and, and hope that one of our shared goals will be to really have that very specific outcome as part of, of the money that we spend. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hausmann. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes, I just wanted to talk to what Counsel Ames was talking about, and I do appreciate what Counsel Hausmann talked about. I put it better than I could, but I don't think it's a lack of transparency. Someone's trying to hide something. I heard the same thing in the Scamling days that we're trying to hide something and not be transparent. To me, the city looks like it's, with our bond ratings and the city's doing well. I mean, I think we have a pretty good city. People wanted to go to our school system. So I don't think, I don't want to put it out there that as a city, the administration of the council is trying to hide something, not be, not transparent. You know, especially with a, a budget analyst, with Kathy Griffin before and now Mr. Perry. They've been a pretty good watchdog to make sure that the the city is functioning well. You know, that being said, you know, what Counsel Ames talked about with teachers being not highly paid enough compared to other cities and towns. Some of that is true information and, and how do we get to collectively, how do we get city employees paid equally to or better than other communities? But it's not necessarily on a black and white piece of paper. There are reasons for that. And it, it maybe it's best to talk about it as we move forward as Counsel Ames won't be here. I won't be here. Counsel, Mr. President won't be here. But I always want to, you know, let people know that the city is well-run. And yeah, there are some money out there that, that we have for a rainy day fund or for to make the city a, a better city. And we have spent some of that money down in the past years. But I don't, I, I get a little uncomfortable when I, you know, we talk about transparency. You know, I think this administration, the past administrations have been. And again, with the watchdogs we have with our budget analysts, we do a pretty good job. That being said, we can do a better job and we can do it in a collective way. Because I think Mr. Ailes does an outstanding job. And to say something's not on the website when it was supposed to, kind of thing. I, I'm not particularly worried about that. I know we, if we can do it together, I mean, you say hiring, some IT work might help. But it's not always apples to apples when you compare some of those budget sheets to the Town of Danvers to other communities because quite frankly, I wouldn't want to live in those communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Feldman?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I had, I have a lot of, a lot to echo what Counselor Flaherty just mentioned, but in looking at some of the points that Counselor Ames brought up, I really, I really do think it's kind of apples to oranges and you can, you can find statistics to prove, to back almost any point on either side of any argument. And I really, I don't like in a vacuum without context, comparing ourselves budgetarily to other communities. That being said, I do like the idea of taking ideas that are good in terms of what other communities do in getting the information to their constituents. And I, I agree that I, I don't feel it's a lack of transparency. I feel like it's a lack of staffing. Because the answers have always, everyone's been, when I've asked the right questions, the answers have been always very clear and clearly communicated to me, but it's just, we don't have the staffing and capacity to put this information in a user-friendly format. And I would, I would hope that if we are looking to, I would echo what Counselor Hausmann said about, we're looking to incorporate staffing in, in finance, in the finance department to make the ARPA funds into a more user-friendly format to, to disclose this information to the public. I would hope that we continue to build a position like that, or at least the capacity for that office to be in the budget going forward. So we can always be able to do this and always be able to put something up annually that can be a little more user-friendly. And I know that, that takes capacity in terms of staffing, but that is definitely something that I think would make our city better and make and be really helpful in terms of lifting the burden that it's not, it's not transparency. It's, you know, it's lack of capacity, I think, is the bigger, the bigger issue and help us communicate. Also as counselors, it would help support us because I end up answering these questions piecemeal and I, at least I do have, I have an accounting background, so I can, I can kind of put this, these things together. But it would be really helpful if we had a cohesive image document and place to point to that we all were on the same page. So.
Thank you, Counsel Feldman. Counsel Hausmann again?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. I, 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 I don't want to get hung up on the semantics. When I'm talking about transparency, I'm talking about communication. So to Counselor Flaherty's point, I don't think anyone's hiding anything. But the fact, the fact is, we have a relatively new website. And the website apparently was not constructed around including in it as sort of a default function. Being able to put up our financial documents in a layperson sort of user-friendly way to simply communicate. So when I talk about transparency, it's simply communicating to the public information that I, I think it's very reasonable to say they should have, which is something, you know, very user-friendly for the layperson to understand, you know, whether it's a pie chart or, you know, whatever. Just a very basic layout of financial information that presently we simply don't have on our websites. That's, that's really what I'm talking about. I'm certainly not suggesting anyone's trying to hide information. It's a matter of, of, of good communication, which I think is just fundamental to being able to have, have the trust of the public in, in, in what we do. And, and, you know, I be hard pressed to find someone who'll sing the praises of Mr. Ailes higher than, than I will. I recognize the, the, the challenges he has in his office from a staffing point of view. But with all due respect, I think this has been a, a, a long-term conversation we've had. And so I am looking forward to hopefully having, applying funding that to help us address it. Thank you.
Anybody else to wrap things up before I ask for a motion? I would entertain a motion to accept the grant of twelve million, six hundred and six thousand ninety-seven dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guancy?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Motion's in orders.
And so we have number one sixty. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows in the year two thousand and twenty-one, an order amending an ordinance entitled Chapter two hundred and seventy vehicles and traffic. Amending Chapter two hundred and seventy vehicles and traffic, Section forty-one, parking prohibited at all times by adding the following street segment. Pleasant Street, South Side, in front of Number Thirty-Six Pleasant, extending to Hardy Street. And this was published Friday, September seventeenth. And this would be the final reading.
Counsel Rand, this came from you and Counsel Flowers. You comfortable with moving forward?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yeah.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guancey?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Dixon, do we have anything coming out of committee this evening?
I believe we have at least two. Let me check here. So we have 151, which was in legal affairs. This is the reappointment of a constable, Mr. Christopher P. Chigas.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
And a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guancey?
Yes, Mr. Chigas has been doing this for almost 30 years. So we're comfortable with that appointment. And what else, Ms. Dixon?
We have number 154, which is coming from Public Services. So this is the Council President Appointment of Ms. Amy Benjamin to the Community Preservation Committee.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guancey?
Yes, and we wish Ms. Benjamin the best in her new appointment. Great committee to be on, especially if it's your first committee you've ever been on. Ms. Dixon, is that all we have other than executive session?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I am going to ask for a motion to go into executive session to let the public know is we will be adjourning from, we'll adjourn our meeting, go into executive session. We will not be coming back out into open session. Mr. Dole, does that sound correct?
Counsel President, if you could just, you'd actually have to read how it's worded from the agenda.
Oh, right. That's what I'm going to do. But am I going in the right direction?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to a mass general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A1, purpose number one, to discuss a complaint against public officials, specifically an open meeting law complaint by Joseph Kane dated September 19, 2021, pertaining to the City Council's September 13, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers, Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guancey?
Yes, and Mr. Dole, I'm correct. I don't have to adjourn this meeting. I can do it from executive session?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in. Best part of the meeting, of course, was the resolution for the American Legion team. It's nice that Manager Levine invited us all to the banquet, which is November 20. And we're in the, in the works to get them marching in the holiday parade on Sunday, the 28th. So all good. So counselors, you'll go to your additional link to get into executive session. Our next full city council meeting will be Monday, October 4th, which is next Monday. Thank you, everyone.